Meeting for the regular board meeting of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors is called to order. The Board of Supervisors is meeting in the Supervisor's Hearing Room at 1415 Melody Lane in Bisbee. Today is Tuesday, February 11th pursuant to ARS 38-431.02H. The public will have physical access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior. They're also able to join us online or the mobile app or via phone. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. Mr. Crosby, would you lead us in invocation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lord, thou hast been our dwelling place in all generations before the mountains were brought forth or ever thou hadst formed the earth and the world, even from everlasting to everlasting thou art God. For a thousand years in thy sight are but as yesterday when it is past as a watch in the night. The days of our years are threescore and ten, and if by reason of strength they be fourscore years, yet is their strength labor and sorrow, for it is soon cut off and we fly away. So teach us to number our days that we may apply our hearts unto wisdom. O, satisfy us early with thy mercy that we may rejoice and be glad all our days. Amen.
Amen. All right, Ms. Gomez, can you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely.
All right, we'll begin with roll call. District one.
Crosby's here.
District two.
Gomez is here.
District three, Antonori is here. All members are present and in person in the boardroom. And we will begin with a call to the public. We have, it looks like, four speakers. First speaker up is Ms. Tricia Jardette. She was just online, so I assume that's where she still is.
That's correct. I'm still online. Thank you.
All right, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Thank you. This is Tricia Jardette. I live in Sierra Vista, and I want to say a few words about our elections. They were mentioned earlier. We do have a good election department and system. We've had some glitches, but they've all been solvable, and I think our results are trustworthy. Any effort to go to all precinct voting would be very expensive, I believe. We already have trouble, as I understand it, staffing 17 vote centers. We would have a great deal of difficulty staffing precincts, 80 or whatever. And the hand count is subject to human fatigue and error. And we do do a selective hand count results, and I urge people to learn about that and watch it if they want, in which a precinct is, a couple of precincts are selected, a team does a hand count to see if we agree with the machine. And it can take a while because, as I said, humans make mistakes. So I hope that we will not put a lot of effort into trying to move from our vote center way of operation to a precinct-based voting system. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up would be Mr. Radford Hyde. Are you present or on team, sir? Must be on teams. Mr. Hyde, are you there? All right, we'll come back to you. We'll give you a chance to try to get in. Let's go to Ms. Allison Morse. It says here she's on teams. Ms. Morse, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Supervisors, and thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'm Allison Morse, a registered voter from Portal, and I want to make it clear that I am not representing any political party. First, as a reminder, there has never been a problem with counterfeit ballots in Arizona. As we all know, each voter only gets one ballot, and if there are any discrepancies, it's up to the Recorder's Office to catch them. Mr. Stevens and his staff are continually updating and purging the voter roll, eliminating voters that are, by law, ineligible to vote. Each voter gets no more than one vote. Keep in mind, too, that no other recorder in the state applied for the $1 million ballot paper grant because they were not aware of it nor were they eligible to apply for it. Creating ballots is the job of the Elections Director, not the recorder. How Mr. Stevens was able to access this money and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to create unwarranted costly ballot paper is another story, which I don't have time to go into here. On another topic, though, I wonder how many of you Supervisors have actually participated in a hand count audit? I can tell you from experience that it is tedious, time-consuming, and error-prone. It is not uncommon to count a few hundred ballots several times and get different results each time over the course of eight full hours. Some of us were required to return the following day to complete the count. This process has to be repeated until the error is within acceptable statutory limits. There is nothing wrong with our highly efficient and regularly inspected tagulators. I'm wondering if you Supervisors have ever observed a logic and accuracy test? The efficiency and precision of the machines is remarkable, and yes, we could have election results much sooner if we relied solely on the machines, but the law requires us to take the extra time and verify the count with human hands and minds. The more handling of the ballots, however, the more prone they are to errors in counting. Finally, I'd just like to say that Portal does not have a vote center, nor am I advocating for one. The closest one for us is about an hour away, but most of us vote by mail, like the vast majority of Arizonans. To revert back to precinct polling places, the county would incur significant costs for additional equipment and supplies to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. The extra poll work and volunteers would not be easy to find. When voters cast their ballots at the wrong polling place, their ballot would simply not be counted. I ask you to please consider these issues when discussing potential changes to our elections in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up is Ms. Tamara Birch. You're just knocking them out, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Good morning again, and thank you for allowing me to speak. It's very important that our voices be heard. I'm Tamara Birch, a voting resident of Bisbee, Arizona. My concerns are on your positions and what we need from our Voting and Elections Departments. Currently, I oppose House Bill 2440. It's to protect the Cochise County Board of Supervisors members, giving them immunity and the ability to refuse to certify the results of our elections. This is unconstitutional, and it disenfranchises all of the voters. It will incur additional financial burdens to the taxpayers. Our tax dollars should not be used on this costly, unnecessary action that will only impede the will of the voters. I oppose change in our voting system of voting locations. The use of our 18 vote centers is appropriate and well-received. Reverting back to the previous 55-plus precinct voting locations, we require more money, the use of county staff, more equipment, more training for personnel and volunteers. We barely have enough volunteers at our vote centers right now. I definitely oppose and say no to the 100% hand count, which is not workable. It's inefficient and it's unnecessary. There would be not enough time, money, locations, or trained personnel for this unlawful procedure. I've been part of a mandated hand count. Yes, there are human errors, but then the ballots are recounted until they actually coincide with the verifiable amounts in the machines. Let's keep our mail-in ballots. Over 80% of our voters use them. That is the will of the people. Let's respect and enforce our state statutes. Let the rule of law and respect the voter's times used efficiently, like let's say you live in Bisbee and have to vote in Benson. That's efficient. Encouraging participation would encourage more voters and qualified individuals in all aspects of our elections and Recorder's Office. I believe our elections are safe, secure, and efficient, as are. Thank you for all your endeavors to promote democracy. Tamara Birch.
Thank you, ma'am. And we'll go one more time. Mr. Hyde, are you available via teams? Are you there, sir? Mr. Hyde, going once.
Hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we got you, sir. Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Supervisors. I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the county citizenry for attempting to correct all of the wrongs. And the first thing I'd like to address is that I believe that getting to a quick and equitable settlement with the Dan LeChance case is important. Get it over with, get it done, move on. So I'm in favor of handling that because I believe that the election, there were many problems with that election. The second thing I'd like to point out is that, as pointed out earlier, that we need a time-limited sales tax rather than property tax increase. And I'm not sure why someone would think that 25 years is an appropriate time-based sales tax term, estimated to bring in $350 million or more for a jail that is expected to cost under $100 million. Everybody knows that. Again, I'm not against a new jail, but the way it was handled was just terrible. And third, I'd like to point out that you're hearing a lot of arguments from people who have zero credibility in IT and cybersecurity claiming and regurgitating the notion that the machines are secure. I am a professional cybersecurity person, and I am the credible person that can tell you that there's no such thing. So the only way to ensure that we have these types of fair elections is the paper ballots' hand count, return to the precincts as the previous board had voted to do before they, after the deadline, voted against it to go back to the voting centers. It's all just ridiculous. Just put it back in the hands of the people instead of the hands of ESNS, who is counting our votes. Maybe they are an upright, upstanding organization, but, you know, you're just trusting without verifying. There's no way to verify the software on the machines. We don't have the ability to even examine it because of, you know, they're claiming that it's against the rules or the law to even examine their code. So all these people that are claiming that it's safe, and they're just, they have no credibility. Take it from someone who has credibility. These things need to go. Thank you very much.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, we have no additional public comment from the public, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve items, Agenda Items 1 through 5 on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve Consent Agenda Items 1 through 5.
I second.
All right, any discussion?
Yes, indeed. I would like to express my regrets about number three, accepting the resignation of County Recorder David W. Stevens, a personal friend of mine. Nonetheless...
You're here. And any other comments? None? All right, I'd also like just to mention on Agenda Item Number 4, we're approving the appointment of a precinct committee man today. And it's a very important position. I wish more members of the public would get involved in it. The PCs actually, in the absence or the resignation of a legislator, get to decide who replaces that legislator. So it's an important job, and congratulations to Miss, or Mr., or Mrs., I'm sorry, I don't know, Ronnie Mastascondos on their appointment. So with that, any other questions? None? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All the consent agenda passes 3 to 0. All right, we'll move on to the next action item. Agenda Item Number 6 can get a motion.
I motion to approve the over-the-counter sale of tax-deed properties as set forth in the attached Exhibit A plus related administrative fees.
All right, a second. Any discussion?
I would be very happy to hear from Ms. Traywick if she cares to address this, if in this recovery...
Well, let's get Laura to comment real first, staff. Laura.
Good morning, Chairman Antonori, members of the board. Last year, the previous board approved a tax-deed land auction to sell properties that had been deeded to the state in care of the Board of Supervisors due to unpaid taxes. After the auction concluded, four parcels remained unsold. These parcels will be made available for over-the-counter sale, which allows buyers to purchase them at a set minimum price. The over-the-counter sale has been open since January 13th and will run through March 28th of this year. During this period, we received a bid for one of these remaining parcels, and the bid was $4,900, which exceeds the minimum bid of $4,680. The bidder also provided a check for the required $25 administration fee. If the board approves this sale, we will proceed with depositing the funds, providing a sold parcels list to the county treasurer, and issuing and recording the deed once the fund's clear. Any remaining unsold parcels will continue to be available for over-the-counter purchase until the deadline. Given that the bid meets the required amount and all necessary fees have been submitted, staff recommends approval.
All right, any other discussion? This is a good thing. It is taking something that's been in arrears and putting it back on the tax rolls, so can't go against that. So with that, all those in favor of approving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 3 to 0. Agenda Item Number 6 is approved. All right, move on to Agenda Item Number 7. Can I get a motion, Mr. Crosby?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the recommendation of the county treasurer for the abatement of property taxes in interest on personal property and the removal of personal property tax liens on Treasurer's Certificate of Clearance Number 2025-00122025-049.
Give a second.
Second.
All right, so let's go to the treasurer for an explanation. Madam Treasurer.
Good morning. All right, this is pretty much an ongoing function of my office, is to clear properties that are no longer collectible. Thank you especially to the Sheriff's Office for the last several years. Their involvement with this process has made me the envy of all the treasures in the state. Deputy Estrada has gone above and beyond, and the Sheriff's Assistant Team. But there are 49 of these parcels that are in various conditions of dereliction, dilapidation, or they're not even there. Mobile homes that have been transferred off the property without clearance or anything else, and they've just disappeared. Obviously, we cannot collect taxes on these properties, and so this is part of the process to abate those taxes that have already been levied, but there is no longer anything for us to go against to actually force collection. And so that's where we are with the process.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Any questions? No, sir. No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item Number 7, the recommendation of the county treasurer for the abatement of property taxes, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 3 to 0. Agenda Item 7 is approved. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number 8. Can Ms. Gomez can get a motion?
I'm moved to authorize the Development Service Department to submit a grant application to the Community Foundation for Southern Arizona for housing repairs.
Second. All right, let's first go to Ms. Bronson for a discussion to tell us what it is, and then we'll have a discussion afterwards.
Good morning. During the past couple of years, Cochise County has developed a housing repair program. The housing repairs have been funded exclusively by grants from the Arizona Department of Housing. Those have been CDBG grants and state housing trust fund grants. Now, the Community Foundation of Southern Arizona has a grant opportunity that will also fund housing repairs. It allows local governments to beat applicants, and it will fill a gap for our housing repair program because it will allow us to work within the city limits of Sierra Vista and the city limits of Douglas, and also within the flood plain. We have an existing program that does similar-type work. The particular grant with the Community Foundation of Arizona, which is funded through the EPA, would deem a project eligible if it enhances the health of the house and also the energy and water efficiency. Presently, we repair roofs with our program. Repairing or replacing a roof contributes to the control of moisture and mold, and therefore it does enhance indoor air quality. We have previously repaired and replaced showers, and we have given fall risk safety showers, and those showers have always included low-flow fixtures, so they are water-efficient. And we also do a number of repairs to HVAC systems. We often provide heat pumps, and those are very energy-efficient. They also contribute to indoor air quality because it enhances ventilation and also provides thermal comfort to the occupants. So we feel this would be a very good fit with our existing program. It won't require us to change our program in any way, and we could ask for up to $350,000 for funding for our housing repair program. So we're asking for your authority to submit this grant application.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Bronson, for your continued diligence. I would like to remind you and my colleague, Ms. Gomez, about the property at the northwest corner of Harkus and Dakota, someplace that you might want to take a look at. And is there any grants that might come through in the pipe that do not have to do with owner occupied that you're aware of?
We're anticipating a reduction in funding opportunities rather than an enhancement. There are programs that assist rentals, but I have not seen any programs that would address that particular property's concerns.
Okay. It has to do with a community well and a property with a mobile home and squatters on it. So that's been kind of an ongoing problem at that location. What can you tell me about spreading funding as far as possible with what you do?
Yes, we're very aware that there's more demand than we have funds, and we prioritize repairs based upon the emergency nature of the repair. We're diligent about not providing anything that would be deemed a luxury item. In fact, we're prohibited from doing anything that would be deemed a luxury item, and that would be something like building a new room to a house, an extension of the house. That would be doing any new construction. This has to be a repair to an existing house. We typically prioritize roofs because of the devastation to the property if it's unaddressed. We also prioritize heating and cooling systems because it's not healthy for an occupant to live without heating and cooling, and surprisingly, we encounter a number of residents, including elderly, disabled residents, that do live without heating and cooling. So those are priorities for us. A hot water heater would be a priority. We don't do any landscaping. We don't, and we're prohibited from doing any type of accessory structure repair, and we wouldn't do anything like fencing. I mean, in an ideal world, if we had all the funding in the world, you know, perhaps we could assist people with items like painting. That is a need that homeowners have particularly if they are elderly, but we typically don't do painting as well because we deem heating and cooling a roof more of a necessity.
If there's no other questions, I could ask you a couple more.
Sure.
Okay. How do you, where is the line drawn between hazard and emergency, off the top of your head?
Hazard, you know, is a higher level, would rise to a more, a hazard would be something that needs immediate attention, but that's not something that we can typically address with our grants because the majority of our grants require us to go out to a formal bid. So that requires an ad in the newspaper, a certain amount of time has to run, then the contractors are required to attend a mandatory site visit, then we have to give them two weeks to submit their bid, then the bid has to be evaluated, and then they have to be selected, and a purchase order has to be granted, and then they're retained. So you can see that the legal necessities do not allow us to work quickly. So if something were a true hazard, it wouldn't be something that we could address immediately.
So does the term "emergency" alleviate some of that weight?
You know, even in terms of an emergency, we still have the legal requirements built into our process, and so, I mean, if it were true emergency that needed to be addressed within a few days, it's a fire hazard, something like that, it's not something we could address. And we're very candid and honest with the participants, and right off the bat, we tell them this is a very time-consuming process because we don't want them to have different expectations.
I appreciate that. What percentage of your projects are roof repair, off the top of your head?
The majority of the projects have been heating and cooling, and I would say the roofs have been probably maybe 30%.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any more questions.
I just have a question. Do you do a lot of work in McNeil and Elfrida?
We have done one house in McNeil, and I think we have done one house in Elfrida as well.
And so if they wanted to be part of some kind of grant, do they contact your office or...?
Yes, we do outreach, and we attempt to reach all of the areas of the county. You know, that's a smaller population in Elfrida and McNeil, and so they're not underrepresented. It seems that only, you know, two houses seems as though they would be underrepresented, but because of the, you know, the vast nature of the county, they're actually not a little, excuse me, a lower percentage. We somewhat have received response from throughout the county. It hasn't been heavily dominated in one area. I have a tickle, too. We have the same tickle.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Computer went back to sleep. I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Any other questions or discussion? None?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. All right, we have motion on the floor to approve, authorize the Development Service Department to submit a grant application to Community Foundation. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Agenda Item 8 is approved, 3 to 0. All right, state and federal legislative from the Agenda Item Number 9, can I get a motion?
Think this is just where you can say whatever you want.
Yeah, and so I, lots going on. So I attended the County Supervisors Association briefing on bills. They're currently tracking 17 bills that are directly impacting counties. The recommendations to approve or support vary, vary depending on the bill, but to give you some examples, one is Senator Kavanaugh has a bill that will change the open meeting law to allow comment to the public at any time during the meeting, and basically that would allow us to do it before, during, or after, depending on where we would want to have that placed in the agenda rather than the way we do it now. Let me see what else. He's also got a bill to reopen the PSPRS pension system to include corrections officers in that that might impact us and expand that because right now they're on a defined contribution plan.
It's corp.
Corp, yep. Yep. So that could impact us. There's one in there about wind farm construction, you know, that we opposed, by the way. We opposed it, but the Board of, the CSA is also opposing the bill. That bill is Marshall. I don't know Representative Marshall, but it's a House bill. Of course, we heard earlier about the one that would create immunity for an unlawful act of a government official. That's a Collins Bill HB 2416. There's one in there for county treasurers, continuing education. I'm sure Ms. Traywick is following that one. Several others involving homeowners associations, which probably affects more Sierra Vista, and I'm sure the mayor's will deal with that. One of the... One of the big ones is there's an SCR to refer the, the sales tax on food to the ballot, which would have a significant impact on communities and especially in Cochise County. I'll give you just in my district, Benson and Wilcox rely heavily on the grocery sale tax from the Safeway and the Walmart there. And it would be probably about a 20 to 23% cut in Wilcox's budget and probably about a 15 to 20% cut in Benson's budget in revenue if those were to pass. So, the CSA recommended opposition to that. But again, it's going to be going through and it may end up going to the voters to determine whether or not that goes. And then, last but not least, I have the governor's 87-page Rural Groundwater Management Act, which I affectionately call the Rural Groundwater Management Control Act because it's all about controlling water. I got a legislative council opinion, not legislative council, I'm sorry, legislative staff approval on it and I'll provide this to you guys. There are significant impacts to the county. It's going to affect housing prices. It's going to affect land prices. It's going to impact our property tax revenue generation. It's going to have significant financial impacts, both to the private sector, to businesses, and of course, to governments as well. It conveniently exempts cities from this so that there's no opposition to her. So, I'm sure the mayors that we've seen that may be in support of this, that may be some of the reason why they support it because they're, they're not going to have to abide by many of the restrictions in here. It changes quite a number of definitions. One of the, one of the big ones that it changes, just so you guys are aware, right now it requires, where was it at here? I was trying to find it. A 40% reduction of all ag.
Oh, my gosh.
Pumping over 40 years, 10% per year. So, to imagine what it would be like to reduce 40% of agriculture in Cochise County, you can imagine the financial impact that would have.
Obviously, that is a, it goes right along with reducing population, which is what they want to do.
Right. Another thing it does is it eliminates what used to be unanimous approval of the Board of Supervisors to declare an area, an active management area or, and this is a protection measure that was in to protect one supervisor from being thrown over in their district, thrown over. So, it requires unanimous vote of the board so that myself and Mr. Crosby can't vote to put a district in, or AME in your district or you can't vote to put one in ours. And it changes the statute to allow a simple majority. So, that could, could be problematic because it was, it was important to have all three members that were required to approve any types of reductions or anything along those lines. So, but I have heard on good authority from both the Speaker and the President of the Senate that they aren't going to allow these bills to proceed and that they are going to enter into negotiations with the governor and her staff to negotiate between the, what would be the Republican version of this and of course, her bill and hopefully they can come to an agreement before the end of the session. But, but for now, that bill is probably not, probably not, not going anywhere.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add when you talk about the food tax.
Yeah.
I met with the mayor of Bisbee yesterday and that would be 65% of their budget.
Of Bisbee's budget.
Of Bisbee's budget if that food tax was to go away, which would be really detrimental to them being able to provide any services whatsoever to the community. Plus, in Douglas, it's 2.5 million that would affect Douglas because we rely on Walmart to basically, for our, our, our sales tax because most of the community is retired or they're on food stamps. So, that Walmart, that tax really contributes a lot to what the city of Douglas can do also. So, I think, I'm hopeful, have you heard of any amendments that would take rural communities, like rural cities, like anything over 40 or anything below 40,000 would not be affected?
I, I don't know if that amendment, at the time that we, we went over this, there was no amendment to that. So, maybe since this was Friday, last week, so I don't know, maybe, maybe yesterday or today they offered amendment, but I have not heard.
Well, I definitely wanted to, if the mayors of Bisbee and Douglas are hearing this, I definitely will give a call to our representatives to ask them to definitely look at how they can either exempt, you know, our small community cities because this will really impact Cochise County if all our cities have to get hit by, you know, the food tax being taken away.
And it'll be, one of the things we heard during the discussion was there would be a push to allow cities to opt for a property tax in lieu of the sales tax, which right now, a lot of our cities do not have property taxes. So, if they can't generate the revenue, they may want to go to a property tax model, which some of the bigger cities have in Arizona, but most of the rural cities rely on retail transaction privilege tax. Pinal County, I guess it would basically wipe out the town of Eloy from what they said. It's like 83% of their revenue. So, it would be a significant, so I suspect that bill will face significant opposition. It is getting a lot of opposition right now. So, we'll, we'll keep tracking it and I'll keep you guys up to date on, on how that's going. But that's pretty much it. Any other discussions, anything you guys want to add?
Well, as far as a sales tax on food, I think eating is a right, like, ability to carry a firearm. So, eating should not be infringed.
The, I grew up in Pennsylvania and Pennsylvania, there's no tax on food or clothing, which is basic subsistence items. But in Pennsylvania, I could tell you, my parents will tell you, they have a significant property tax to offset for that. So, it's the three-legged stool problem, right? You have income tax, property tax, and sales tax. And if you take away one leg, you're going to have to beef up the other ones to offset it. So, it's a, it's a constant balance. And of course, there's the potential for people that do not live in those cities, tourists to come in and shop to pay some of those taxes to reduce the burden rather than putting it all on the property tax owners.
Because in Douglas, a lot of that is from Maupretta. And they come over by and then they double over there. So, it's an interesting subject.
All right. I just lost my agenda. I buried it in the pile of paperwork I have here. All right. So, any, any other discussion on the bills in the legislature? None? All right. All right. So, I don't, I see that my notes had the next meeting. That's what I'm, that's what I'm, I'm just, hang on a second. I'll find, I'll find, I'll find. It's buried. I buried it here somewhere in the papers.
You gotta help us out, Madam Laura.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
The next item is my report.
Oh, okay.
I'll just jump to it. It's not much today, just want to remind the board and members of the public that we are looking at about 45 minutes left. Get your letter of interest in for the county recorder position. So, those are coming into the clerk of the board and the board will meet tomorrow to look over those applications.
Okay. Anything else? Nope?
Nope.
All right. So, then the next one is the summary of current events. I'll pass.
I've got some stuff for here for District Two. I wanted to basically read this letter that came from a constituent out there in Middle March Road and it's about our staff member, Jo Posy. She says, "Just a quick note in regards about Mr. Joe Casey. He is commendable." And that's in black letters. "He has been working on an issue that affects a local ranch near Tombstone, Arizona. He has been good about meeting with the owner and listening about the concerns involved. He will be notifying us in the very near future with the results that the county will need to take care of to rectify the issue. He relieved some of the stress that this situation had generated. I respect and appreciate his professional approach to this issue. Sincerely, William Sewell." And he's, you know, he's an elderly man, so you being able to speak to him and, and at least he's being listened to really makes a big difference because he's not, he's not a guy that would do this just to do it. He really means it. So, thank you very much. And I also wanted to thank, I had a dance for Douglas this past Saturday. Had about 100 people show up from, from all over. So, I wanted to thank everybody who's listening. It was a great time. We danced. We had a good, good time and my dad actually had an open bar. So, it was a really fun event. And the other thing I wanted to also announce is that I'm going to go to the Eastern County Association meeting because there's a big issue that's happening and especially in the eastern part of the county and that's with the Mexican wolf. He's really kind of terrorizing the wolves are in our community, especially among the cattlemen. I gather, I'm learning that the Mexican wolf is a killer. They like to kill and then they go on to the next kill and the next kill. So, it's becoming a serious issue for our ranchers that are in eastern part of our county. So, I'll be going to that meeting up on the 19th and that's all I have.
All right. Nothing from me on District Three. So, that brings us to the conclusion. The next meeting will be held in the Board of Supervisors Special Meeting here at 1:00 PM today in the executive conference room to discuss possible direction of the president's executive orders. And that will be a work session, but there also may be an executive session relation to that, related to that. But that'll be today at 1:00. All right. That's it. This meeting is adjourned.